Welcome to A C E. Today we have to discuss target S S C, C G L and C H S L pure maths session eight. Okay, question number one, first question. The largest and the second smallest angle of the triangle are in the ratio of five is to three. The smallest angle of the triangle is also given thirty six. Then what is the value of the second smallest angle of the triangle? So, the sum of three angles in a triangle is how much? One eighty, so this is five X. Right, so this is five X and this is three X, right? Sum of three angles is one eighty, that is five X plus three X. Plus third angle is how much? The smallest angle is thirty six is one eighty. That means eight X equal to one eighty minus thirty six is one forty four. Eight ones, eight eighteen's, right? So, X equal to how much? Eighteen, so X equal to eighteen, what is asking? The second smallest angle is how much? What is the second smallest angle? The second smallest angle is three X, so three X means eighteen into three, that is how much? Fifty four degrees, right? So, option C is the right answer, okay? So, the second smallest angle is fifty four. Right, simple one. And then next one, the exterior angle of a regular polygon is eighteen degrees. What is, how many number of sides in a polygon? What is exterior angle formula? Exterior angle formula is three sixty by N. How now, you take it? Exterior angle formula is three sixty by N. So, that is eighteen equal to three sixty by N means N equal to how much? Twenty sides, so the polygon has how many sides? Twenty sides, exterior angle, another formula, three sixty by N. Interior angle formula is, interior angle formula is N minus two by N into one eighty degrees. Inside, interior angle formula, okay? Right. Then, next one, third one. P cos theta plus Q sin theta equal to eight and P sin theta minus Q cos theta equal to five. What is value of P square plus Q square? Already, we have discussed this already. So, if we know, A sin theta, A sin theta plus B cos theta equal to X. And A cos theta minus B sin theta equal to Y. So, here, so, and then, sine place, cosine place, cosine place. So, symbols alter, plus, minus, minus, plus. So, opposite symbols, then, what is the condition we discussed? A square plus B square equal to X square plus Y square. So, this is the condition we discussed. Same with A formula, so, P Q, P plus, sorry, sine, cosine, sine. Sine place, cosine, what is the condition? Here directly we can write. So, P square plus Q square equal to X square plus Y square. What is X? Eight and Y is five, that is eight square plus five square. Means how much? Sixty four plus twenty five is how much? Eighteen nine, so answer is, option A is the right answer. Very simple question, okay? We have discussed cases, previous sessions, we have talked about. Sine, cosine, four cases, so those four cases we have to know. Four cases, problems, okay? So, that is the first model. Right, question number four, see, in the given figure, the center of a circle is how much? A and B C equal to A B equal to C D. B C equal to A B equal to C D means A D equal. It is R, it is, it is also radius, A B and A D both are radius. That means what we are observing, four sides are equal means immediately we can tell. A B C D, A B C D is an rhombus. It is, what is it? A rhombus form, how is it? How now? In a rhombus, what we know, the diagonal bisect the angle, angle is just, bisect, but this X is, this is also, X. But, this X, this is also, X, right? But, X X means this angle at the center is how much? Eighty minus two X, so angle at the center is how much? Eighty minus two X, but, angle at the center means immediately, what is the theorem? We have to know degree measure theorem. Degree measure theorem, what is angle B C D? B C D, what is B C D? This B C D angle is equal to one eighty minus half of angle at the center. One eighty minus half of angle at the center. Angle at the center is angle B, sorry, B A D. You take it? So, this theorem, degree measure theorem, point number two, second point we will discuss. And then, it is, one eighty minus half of, what is B A D? One eighty minus two X, one eighty minus two X and then the ninety, one eighty minus ninety, ninety plus X. That means this angle is how much? Ninety plus X, how now? Right, four angles, we know, in a rhombus, the sum of four angles is how much? One eighty degrees, three sixty degrees, so this is how much? Two X and this is how much? Two X plus ninety plus X plus one eighty minus two X equal to how much? Three hundred sixty degrees, how now? Right, and then, it is, five X, five X and then, three X. Two seventy twelve and then, equal to how much? Ninety, and then, X equal to how much? Thirty degrees, so what is the value of X? X is how much? Thirty degrees, option B is the right answer, okay? Right, and then, next one. See, if X by, X square minus seven X plus one equal to one by five. X cube plus one by X cube.
One nine three six. X square is one nine three six. Then what is X? X is how much? So, square root of one nine three six, square root of one nine three six means it is in between forty, uh forty four, that means forty four, right? So, what is the value of X? X is how much? Forty four, forty four. And what is the perimeter, perimeter? So, eighteen into forty four. And it's two. Forty four into eighteen. So, okay. So, seven ninety, eighteen table to divide out. Okay, so seven ninety two is the right answer. I think I mistake just so directly eighteen table to divide it. Choose okay, so option B is the right answer, okay? Right then. Question number seven, seventh question. Sure only, a sphere of thirty centimeters is dropped into a cylindrical vessel of eighty centimeter diameter. Eighty centimeter diameter means radius is how much? Forty. Radius forty centimeter which is partly filled with water. Then what is the level of water rises? So, if it is X, find the value of X. And a beaker. A beaker. Water, so some water is placed in that beaker. When the water places. Okay, so whose radius is how much? So, the vessel, cylindrical vessel radius is how much? Forty. In that, a sphere of thirty centimeters radius is dropped. In the oka spear. Oka spear. Thirty centimeters. We can immediately. The water will rise, water rise. Yanto rise. X centimeters rising. Then what is X? Simply we know. Yanto volume of sphere local key immerse out. Anta water. And the volume of simple game. The volume of a sphere. Condition. The volume of a sphere. Yanto. Is equal to volume of water raised. Water. A volume. Sphere volume. Equal. Yanto water. Anta sphere. So, water. Ante volume. Now, volumes are constant here. Right, what is the volume of the sphere? Four third by R cube. What is R? Radius is thirty. So, thirty into thirty into thirty. Similarly, what is the volume of water? Water. Cylindrical shape. So, cylindrical shape means volume of cylinder is pi R square. What is the radius of the cylinder? Forty pi R square H. How much it raised? X, so that X value we have to find, that's it. So, pi, pi cancel. Three ones, three tens, okay? So, two zeros cancel, one four cancel. So, remaining. That's it. So, X equal to, X equal to. Twos and fives, right? So, six nine nine fives, forty five by two. Forty five by two means twenty two point. So, option B is the right answer. So, how much it is increasing? Twenty two point five centimeters it is rising, okay? Right. Then. Question number eight. A equal to five, B equal to three and C equal to two. What is the value of A square plus B square plus C square minus two A B plus two B C minus two? Exactly, it is in the form of A plus B plus C whole square. In A plus B plus C whole square, where it is minus with A B and A C minus is there. Minus two A B minus two A C. So, what is the common letter? A is the common letter. So, minus. A. On a common. And it is in the form of minus A plus B plus C whole square. And they got that. So, what is the formula? A square, it is equal to A square plus B square plus C square minus two A B plus two B C minus two A C. Exactly, so how we can write minus A plus B plus C whole square? So, what is minus? And five minus five plus three plus two whole square, that is how much? Zero. So, option A is the right answer, okay? So, simple. A plus B plus C whole square. Right? And then, next one. The perimeter of the. The perimeter of an equilateral triangle A B C is thirty six centimeters. The side A B and A C are extended to a point P and Q respectively. A circle is drawn which touches the sides A P, A Q and B C at P Q R respectively. What is the length of A P? So, it already. Geometry. For a triangle, just see. In a triangle, what is a triangle? A B C is a triangle, A B C is a triangle. In which if A B and A C are extended. If A B and A C are extended, a circle is drawn which touches. A P up to P and Q. A circle is drawn which touches A P, A P, A Q and B C. And simply, if a X circle is drawn, if a X circle is drawn to a triangle. E triangle. X circle. So, if a X circle is drawn to a quadrilateral, quadrilateral key draw. It is. P Q. Here. Right? So, if a X circle is drawn, X circle. What is the condition we discussed? The perimeter of the, it is not only for equilateral triangle, for any triangle, A triangle. The perimeter that is A B plus B C. A B plus B C plus C A. The perimeter of the triangle is always equal to two times of the tangent. Tangent two times, that is two A P. Anytime. Two A P or two A Q. So, whenever if a X circle is drawn, whenever if X circle is drawn, the perimeter of the triangle A B plus B C plus C A is always equal to two times of the tangent of the circle. Our circle. What is the tangent here? A P is the tangent, A Q is the tangent. And A P and A Q both are equal, so it is always a double. Double. So, what is given, perimeter is given thirty six, we have to find A P. So, what is A P? Simple, A P is how much? Eighteen. Eighteen. Sorry, X circle. Perimeter. A tangent. Just half. So, directly we can mark, okay? So, this is the theorem we discussed. So, this theorem we'll discuss. The perimeter of the triangle is always equal to two times of the tangent. Okay, in a classroom. Right, then what is the value of cosecant square A minus of cos square A B? Cosecant square A minus. Cos square A minus two cos power four A by two sine power four A minus sine square A. Is that a question? See, very simple. So, actually, it's a trigonometric expression or not? You put in a trigonometric expression, what we have to do? Simply assume the angle. Angle. Zero. Cosecant zero undefined, so I'm taking ninety degrees. A ninety. What is cosecant ninety? Cosecant ninety is one minus. What is cos ninety? Zero minus two into zero, two into zero. Zero by anything is zero. Two into one minus one. The one minus zero is how much? One, answer is how much? One, so option D is the right answer, very simple. Only thing, we have to assume the angle. Angle. Right, so here what we are observing, simple. Yani ninety. Automatically. Sir, ninety. No need of ninety. Any angle you can assume. Mally. Previous sessions. Any angle. Fifteen. Yes, you can take eighteen. You can take anything you can take but follow three conditions, three conditions follow. Question. Options. Unique answer. You would. Okay now, right? And then, next one. A minus B minus A minus B minus C whole square minus A minus B whole square plus two A C minus two B C equal to four. What is the value of C? Explain. So, A minus B minus, it means A plus B plus C whole square formula. A square plus B square plus C square minus A B. A plus into minus. Minus two A B minus into minus plus two B C minus ah minus two A C. Right? And A minus B whole square minus. A square. Minus A square minus B square minus two A B minus into minus plus two A B plus two A C minus two B C equal to how much? Four. I think find the value of C. A square, B square, A square, B square cancel. Two A B, two A B cancel. Two A C, two A C cancel. Two B C, two B C. Finally, what is remaining? C square equal to how much? Four, C equal to how much? So, option C is the right answer, simple. Expand. So, directly what is answer we are getting? C, C is how much? Two, okay? Then, next one, C. In a cyclic quadrilateral A B C D, A B and D C are produced to meet at a point P. If angle A D C equal to seventy, D A B equal to sixty, what is angle P B C plus P C B? Indeed? In a cyclic quadrilateral, in a cyclic quadrilateral, what are produced? A B and D C. A B and D C both are produced to meet at a point P. A B and D C both are produced to meet at a point. And A B C D is a cyclic quadrilateral. It is a cyclic quadrilateral. A B C D is a cyclic quadrilateral. Right, cyclic quadrilateral. Some of the opposite angles is three, one eighty degrees, right? Some of the opposite angles is how much? One eighty. Angle A D C is how much? Seventy. And D A B is how much? Sixty, then what is asking? P B C plus P C B, right? Very simple. My cyclic. Total five points. Cyclical. The exterior angle is always equal to opposite interior angle. In a cyclic. Oka cyclic. In A B C D is a cyclic. In a cyclic. If exterior angle is drawn, okay, exterior angle draw. The exterior angle is always equal to opposite interior angle. Opposite interior angle, exterior angle. Equal. Marry seventy. Opposite. Seventy. Marry sixty. Sixty. The exterior angle is equal to opposite interior angle. So, what is the P B C plus? P B C is seventy plus that is sixty, means how much? One hundred thirty degrees, so option C is the right answer. Direct question, so what is the theorem? So, the exterior angle of a cyclic, the exterior angle of a cyclic quadrilateral is always equal to opposite interior angle. So, opposite interior angle. Okay, but five points. Cyclical. Cycle. In a cyclic. Angles. Ptolemy. Third one, area of a cyclic. Fourth one, so circumradius of a cyclic. Four and exterior angle of a cyclic. Total five points. Fifth point is given. So, the exterior angle of a cyclic quadrant is always equal to opposite interior angle. On a, right? Then. What is the minimum value of two sine square B plus three cos square? Very simple, two. Choose. So, already we discussed A sine square theta plus B cos square theta. Minimum value, what is the minimum value means? So, the minimum quotient. Okay, and what is the maximum value means? Maximum quotient. So. You put in. So, he is asking minimum, what is a two, three? This question, what is the maximum value? What is the maximum value? So, choose. A sine square theta plus B cos square theta. What is the minimum number you are observing in that quotient? That is the minimum. What is the maximum we are observing? That is maximum, okay? Right? Then, next one. If A plus B plus C equal to zero, then find the value of A square by A square minus B C plus B square by B square minus C A plus C square by C square by C square minus. Right? It is a algebraic equation or not? A plus B plus C equal to zero is a algebraic equation or not? Algebraic equation. Simply assume the values, values. Zero. Two minus one minus one. Two minus one minus one zero. Two minus two zero. Simply substitute the values. Simple. Value. So, A equal to two. Two square. Four by four minus B C, what is B C? One, one. Minus one plus B square. One by B square. One, C A, what is C A? Minus two minus of minus plus, sorry, plus two. Plus two, right? On a, so C A, similarly, C square, what is C square? One by C square. Minus A B, what is A B minus two minus of minus? Plus two. So, four by three plus one by three plus one by three. And six by three. Two, so answer is B. So, my. Anytime, algebraic expression or equation is given. Expression. Equation. Simply assume the values. Can you same trigonometry. Me. Question. Options. Options. The three points for algebra as well as trigonometry. Okay now, right? And then, next one, question number fifteen. The radius of the cylinder is increased by twenty percent and the height is decreased by twenty five percent. Then what is the percentage increase or decrease in the volume of the cylinder? Percentages. Actually, what is the volume formula? Pi R square H. Pi R square H. R, how many times it is coming? Two times, height how many times coming? One time. R. Two times height. So, three. Three times. So, what is the radius is increased by twenty percent plus twenty plus twenty and height is decreased by twenty five percent minus twenty five. My. X plus Y plus X Y by hundred. Sorry. X plus Y plus percentages. X Y by hundred. Volume. Two times. Two times. First. I am taking first. These. X twenty eight, Y. Substitute. Twenty plus twenty plus twenty into twenty by hundred. So, what is the forty four percentage? Forty four percentage plus. So, what is the result? X plus Y plus X Y by hundred. So, twenty percent. And twenty plus twenty into twenty into twenty by twenty. So, forty four, forty four. Forty four. Why? Minus twenty five plus forty four into minus twenty five by hundred. They want the ones, fours, four ones, four levens. Forty four minus twenty five minus eleven. And then the six and eight percentage. So, difference. Eight percentage. What is the increasing percent? Plus. Minus. So, what is the increasing percentage? Eight percentage increasing. So, you put in. Volume. Two times. Three parameters. Are they side? Only length to length. In a square, if the side is increased by twenty percent, what is the increase in perimeter? Same twenty. It is twenty percent increase. Because. Parameter. So, same. And changing. Same value. Area. Volume. Two times. Okay now, right? Right? And then, question number sixteen. In triangle A B C, A B equal to A C. A B equal to A C means it is a which triangle? Isosceles triangle. A B equal to A C, A B equal to A C means it is an isosceles triangle. A D is perpendicular to B C. A D is perpendicular to B C. In isosceles triangle, one more point we'll discuss. In isosceles triangle, if an altitude is drawn, this is not only altitude, it is median as well as angular. Okay now, similarly, in X Y Z, X Y equal to Y Z. X Y equal to Y Z. X Y Z, X Y equal to. X Y equal to X Z. X Y, X Z equal and W X is. And W X is perpendicular to Y Z. W X. Same condition. If the area of. Two triangles, similar triangles. Two similar triangles. Area of A B C by, area of A B C by, area of. X Y Z is how much? So, twenty five by twenty, forty nine. Manam, if two triangles are similar, triangle A B C is similar to triangle X Y Z. Two triangles, similar triangle. Similarity. Conditions. If two triangles are similar, if two triangles are similar, then areas ratio is equal to square of the corresponding size ratio. Square of the corresponding size ratio. What is A B by X Y? A B by X Y. Simply square root of. Five by seven whole square. The sides are in the ratio of five is to seven. So, sides and the ratio. Five is to seven ratio. So, if the areas are in the ratio of twenty five by forty nine, the sides are in the ratio of five by seven. Not only that. Anytime if two triangles are similar, if two triangles are similar, size ratio equal to high. It is equal to corresponding heights ratio, corresponding altitudes ratio, corresponding medians ratio, corresponding perimeters ratio, circumradius ratio, inradius ratio, corresponding angular. Any ratios. If two triangles are similar. W X plus A D plus, sorry, W X W plus A D by X W minus A D. They actually, A B plus X Y, A B plus X Y are in the ratio of five is to seven means W X. X W by A D is also in the ratio of. Seven by five ratio. Seven by five ratio, so. So, sides are in the ratio of five is to seven, then altitudes also in the ratio of five is to seven. You can reverse. Five is to seven. I. X Y plus A D. Seven plus five by seven minus five. Twelve by two means how much? Six, so what is the answer? Six is the right answer. Okay, so you put in. If two triangles are similar, two triangles. The areas ratio is always a square of the corresponding size ratio. And also, if two triangles are similar, so sides ratio. Sides ratio, corresponding sides ratio. Corresponding altitudes ratio. Corresponding medians ratio. Corresponding angular. Perimeters ratio. Circumradius ratio. Inradius ratio is also same. Any. And the five is to seven. So, five, altitudes. This question. Same. Angular. Okay, anything same. Right, then, next one. Find the value of sine square thirty plus cos into cos square forty five plus five tan square thirty plus three by two sine square ninety minus three cos square ninety. Value substitution. Value substitution. What is sine ninety, sine thirty? One by two, one by two whole square is one by four into cos forty five, one by root two whole square is one by two plus five into. What is sine ten thirty? One by root three, one by root three whole square is one by three plus three by into. What is sine ninety? Sin ninety is one, one square is one minus three into cos square ninety, cos ninety is zero. So, zero. And what is. One by eight plus five by three plus three by two. L C M is twenty four. And three plus three eights, eight fives, forty plus twelve, twelve threes, thirty six. And what is the seventy nine, seventy nine by twenty four. So, seventy nine by twenty four is the right answer. So, option A is the right. Seventy two plus seven. And seventy nine. So, option A is the, simple value substitute. Right, then, next one. See, T Q R S is a cyclic quadrilateral. Cyclical. Five points. The most important point is some of the opposite angles is one eighty degrees, right? With T Q as diameter. Diameter. The only theorem we have to remember. Angle on a semicircle is ninety degrees, okay? And then, my question of two clues. One is cyclic. Second one is angle on a semicircle is ninety degrees. If angle Q P R equal to sixty five, what is the measure of P S R? Sure only, so what is the diameter? P Q is the diameter, P Q is the diameter. O is the center, so P Q R S is a cyclic quadrant. P Q R S is a cyclic quadrilateral such that angle Q P R equal to Q P R is how much? Sixty five degrees. Sixty five degrees, then find angle P S R. It theta value. Already. Angle on a semicircle is ninety degrees, so this angle is how much? Ninety degrees, on a, so angle P R Q equal to how much? Ninety degrees, what is the theorem? Angle on semicircle. Angle on semicircle. So, this is ninety and this is sixty five, means this angle is how much? Twenty five degrees. In a triangle, the sum of three angles is how much? One eighty. And also, we know, in a cyclic. In a cyclic quadrant, the sum of the opposite angles is one eighty and the theta is twenty five. Some of the opposite angles is how much? One eighty and the theta plus twenty five equal to how much? One eighty degrees. It is a cyclic quadrant. Cyclical quadrant, the sum of the opposite angles is one eighty, so theta is how much? One hundred fifty five, so option A is the right answer. Okay, so one is cyclic quadrant, second one is angle on a semicircle is ninety degrees. So, two themas. Right? Question number nineteen, nineteenth question. Two root X equal to, two root X equal to five plus root three by five minus root three minus five minus root three by five plus. You put in. Rationalizing factor. Right? So, minus. Goes minus. Already. So, you put in. Root five plus root three whole square by squares difference. So, five minus three is how much? Similarly, so plus. Minus root five minus root three whole square by squares difference. And what is the A plus B whole square minus A minus B whole square? A plus B whole square minus A minus B whole square. Formula is four A. On a, so four A B. Four into A, what is A? Root five, B. By two ones, two twos. Two root fifteen. Two root X equal to, two root fifteen means what is X? X equal how much? Fifteen. And they got that, so option B is the right answer. Fifty. Rationalizing factor. Okay now, right? And then, next one, see. A copper wire is bent in the form of an equilateral triangle. Okay, equilateral triangle. Shape. Okay, whose area is how much? One twenty one and the same wire is bent in the form of a circle. Then find the area of, then the find area of enclosed by the wire. Find the area of the circle. What is the area of the circle? Area of the circle is pi R square, what is area of the circle? Pi R square. So, what we have to do? We have to divide with eleven, which option is divided with eleven, that is the right answer. C is option C is the right answer. Option C. So, directly we can mark option C as the right answer. So, simple. Right? Actually, question directly, we have to check which option is divided with eleven. So, you put in. In two dimension, if a shape is converted into another shape. What a shape. What is constant means? Perimeters are constant. Perimeter, perimeter of, perimeter of equilateral triangle is equal to perimeter of circle. Perimeter is equal. Right? So, what is the perimeter? What is the area given?